Select Board meeting for Tuesday, July 26. It is our public comment period first. We haven't been asked by anybody who wished to make public comments. So I will move to the second item, which is a proclamation for Purple Heart Day. So I will ask Mr. Nelson if he will please read the proclamation.
Absolutely. All right. So this is for the Purple Heart Community Proclamation. Whereas the people of the Town of Needham have a great admiration and utmost gratitude for the men and women who selflessly serve their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Needham who served in harm's way in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom of the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many of our citizens were awarded Purple Heart for their sacrifice having been wounded in action while engaged in combat. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest American military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of the military merit on August 7, 1782, in Newburg, New York by General George Washington. This award was made of purple cloth shaped as a heart with the word merit sewn upon it. And whereas August 7th is nationally recognized as Purple Heart Appreciation Day, now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board of the Town of Needham does hereby proclaim that Needham is a Purple Heart community and that August 7th will be considered Purple Heart Day in Needham. The Select Board encourages residents and businesses to display the American flag and recognize the Purple Heart recipients on that day honoring the service and sacrifice of our military personnel.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
So with the motion moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. We are a Purple Heart community. Next, we have a proclamation for India Independence Day, August 15, 2022, is the anniversary.
All right. Okay. So whereas India is the largest free democratic country in the world and home of nearly a fifth of the world's population with exceptional beauty and rich cultural heritage. And whereas the Indian independence movement was led by patriots including Mohammed Gandhi, Renee Lakshmi Bai, Dash Bandhu Das, Jaharul Nero, Subash Shandra Bose, Leila Lupat Rai, Lokman Yad Talok, Bagat Singh, Mo Lana Azid, Rajagopal Shari, Sudor Patel. And one of their resistance methods was nonviolent protests, which became a model of civil rights movements around the world, including one led by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas on August 15, 1947, India regained independence from 200 years of the oppressive British occupation and the civil disobedience and nonviolent protests. That movement became a new weapon to fight against inequality and injustice in the world. And whereas Constituent Assembly of India created a democratic constitution of its own, including inspirations from the American Constitution. And whereas a youthful country celebrating its 75th Independence Day, India has shown tremendous growth in education, health, agriculture, and technology since its independence. And whereas India's Independence Day is celebrated by almost 1.5 billion people across the country with flag hosting ceremonies, kite flying, and parades. And whereas India has the largest desforal in the world and over 36 million of Indian origin live in other countries, with over 4 million of Indian origin living in the United States, over 100,000 in Massachusetts, and hundreds in Needham, who contribute greatly to the social, economic, and civic health of our nation and our community. And whereas India is composite civilization and ancient nation extraordinarily unique as a cultural mosaic of people encompassing a prodigious diversity of ethnic groups, religions, languages, customs, traditions, clothing, gastronomy, climate conditions, and natural resources, and yet presenting an underlying unity. Now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board of Needham does hereby proclaim August 15, 2022 as India Day and encourages all residents to join the Indian community to celebrate and commemorate its 75th Independence Day.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I note that we are joined tonight by Bala Mudhu Kupan and Vipul Bhushan from Icon this evening. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. We look forward to celebrating again this year.
Thank you for coming in.
The third item on our agenda is the swearing in of our new chief, our fire chief. So with that, if Chief Conroy could come in. And I invite our town clerk, Mrs. Eaton, to come forward to do the swearing in. And if all of you could come gather in, I know it's a special occasion and everybody wants to be here, so come wiggle in. We're going to be crowded for a moment, but it's all good.
Lot of love in the room. Lot of love in the room. It's all right.
He should definitely be in front. Good thing, yeah.
Well, we know you helped get him here, so we, yeah.
Yeah. It takes everybody. We know that.
Just a little bit. I'm sure it's more than a little bit.
Hopefully Cindy's grabbing one. Did everybody make it in?
I think there's a couple more people.
You can be a little closer. We can open the back door. They're good.
Repeat after me, and after I say aye, say your name. Aye.
Aye, Thomas Conroy.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As fire chief.
As fire chief.
For the Town of Needham.
For the Town of Needham.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of this Commonwealth.
The laws of this Commonwealth.
And the rules, regulations, and bylaws.
The rules, regulations, and bylaws.
Of the Town of Needham.
Of the Town of Needham.
Aye.
Aye, Thomas Conroy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
Aye.
Aye, Thomas Conroy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You are so sworn.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Chief Conroy, I'm going to give you a chance to speak, but I do want to recognize your family who is here tonight, your wife Melissa and your.
My daughter, Elsie.
Ashley.
Emily and Lindsay.
And I would just note that I do think having multiple daughters is an asset to becoming a fire chief in Needham. All right. I also want to recognize Chief Schlittler is here, who I know is about to become a very important partner for you.
Yep.
All right. And I see Chief Buckley back over there, if I'm remembering properly as I'm looking.
Chief DePauli is also here.
That's right. Chief DePauli is over here. So I'm grateful to all of you and all of the current team coming out for support. But let me turn it over to you. We are thrilled to have you here.
Thank you to the Select Board. I really appreciate it. To the town manager for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. To all the firefighters. Thank you. We got retired Chief Buckley here, retired Chief DePauli, retired Inspector Pappetti, our administration's here somewhere. Thank you so much for your support. The police department, thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate everybody showing up tonight and giving me your support. Especially to Chief Anastasi and Chief Gigliano and Lieutenant Conny, always have my back. Thank you, guys.
So I just want to say that public service in Needham is a team sport, and you all show that every single day in Needham, and I am grateful to you. Thank you.
That's a very important part. You've got to have that pen.
No pressure.
Hopefully no blood.
Yeah, no, no blood isn't good.
We'll look forward to seeing you again.
Absolutely.
And thank you all for coming in tonight. And you're all welcome to stay.
It's exciting. Super race. Real, really.
I have kombucha. Maybe it's Matt. You should, you should get some of that. He drinks the McDonald's.
All right. Good. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a grant of location. Is Ms. Calendar here? And I see her online.
Good evening.
We are going to try to move the crowd outside a little bit, just down the hall, hopefully.
Outside, maybe.
Outside, maybe even better. Ms. Calendar, hopefully you can tell us why you're here for your grant of location this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are seeking a grant of location to install, to install, excuse me, approximately 21 feet of conduit into Berkshire Road. And this is to provide underground service to the customer at 233 Great Plains Avenue in Needham. And I'm here to entertain any questions anyone might have.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, is this in order?
Everything is in order.
And it's been done in the proper process?
Yes, it has.
And we haven't already dug it?
Perfect.
This is a public hearing, so I don't know if there's anybody here to speak to us about this grant of location. If not, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 21 feet of conduit in Berkshire Road.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Calendar.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Our next meeting is a joint meeting with the Park and Recreation Commission. So I see Mr. Gerstle. If you would come forward and.
Fred, ready?
I see. Anybody else from your committee?
They should be all.
Are they all online? Everybody zooming in?
Over going into the other. Should be joining us.
All right. I see Ms. Chastain has joined us.
Hi, everyone.
Geddes. Do we have everybody moved over? Thank you, Kristen. If I, it's good to see you, Crest. If I could.
Mr. Keenan.
Yeah, so I have to recuse myself. Frederica Lallon was my campaign manager, so.
And the same goes for me. I recuse myself as well.
All right. So we have two recusers. With that, let me turn it over to you, Mr. Gerstle. I think both of our Select Board members will be leaving the room for a moment.
Wow. Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight. Believe me, that was not a tough act to follow that went in front of us, so it should be fun. And thank you very much for the time for us tonight. As you know, I am the Chair of the Park and Rec Commission, and as of February of this year, we were short one member. So we put through an exhaustive search of trying to fill this spot along with the help of Marcus Nelson, Miles Tucker, and our Director Stacy Mulroy. We were able to actually interview six candidates. And I know it doesn't sound like a big number, but that is a very large number for someone in a commissional type of role. So we were able to interview the candidates and then have a great open dialogue and discussion about who is the best fit for this. And I think we all came to the agreement of the same person would be this ideal candidate for the Park and Rec Commission. I think she will be a great breath of fresh air and be a great addition to an already impeccable commission that we have, present company excluded, of course. So enough of me flopping my gums. I'd like to bring up Ms. Frederica Lallon to sit next to us and introduce herself and give a brief description of her time and introduce you to her.
Welcome, Fred.
Hi, everyone. How's everybody doing?
We're all good.
Nice to see you. I was going to say, for those of you who don't know me, but I don't think that's anyone at this table, so, thank you. I'm really honored to be, you know, getting appointed to this commission. I think it's a really important one in the town, and I would give you the whole spiel of like, I have these five children, we use all the facilities that, you know, and programming for Parks and Rec. The good news is I come with my own focus group, so I bring that to the table. Most importantly, I think for me, I am the sort of person that's like, I live here, I want to pitch in, I want to contribute. I feel like everyone, when you live in a place, you should contribute and try to help make it, you know, better or whatever is already good, work with that. And I'm just really excited to get to do that in this capacity. Is there anything else you need to know?
I just wanted to say, being a part of this interview process and getting to know Fred, which I've known for a little while now, I think her service to this town is something that we are all going to be extremely proud of. And one thing about her is that I feel like there's nothing that's too much for her to do, and I feel like there's no person that she wouldn't talk to or work with in order to get the job done and make Needham a better place. So it's an honor to have you appointed to this position and looking forward to working with you.
Okay.
Fred, I know you through flag football.
Yeah.
And it's nice to see your family here. I think that's terrific to have them. Such an important role and such an important evening and such an important position for your mom to step up to this. And clearly has the credentials and the drive and the love of this town and looking forward to working with you board to board as we move forward on the projects that affect the entire community. So thank you. Nice to see you.
Well, and I know Fred because she's my neighbor. So we all know Fred for some reason, but I can absolutely agree with what Marcus says, which I know that Fred and Chris are a team, and if there was something where she was feeling stressed, he is absolutely the person you want in the boat with her. So thank you to the team, and we look forward to everything, Fred. So glad that you're here.
Thank you.
So we need actually a motion, I think.
I will do that.
And I think that motion will need a roll, maybe not a roll call vote of our board, or does it re-roll call vote of everybody? Okay. So just so that we know of all boards, since we have a hybrid set up for this right now.
I move that the Select Board and the Park and Recreation Commission vote to appoint Frederica Lallon to the Park and Recreation Commission until the next town election to be held on April 11, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes?
I will vote aye.
And can you call your board members to poll them, please?
I will go the Vice Chair, Ms. Michelle Geddes.
Aye.
Ms. Cindy Chastain?
Aye.
And that is our quorum for tonight.
And that's our quorum. And with that, you are appointed, and we look forward to having you serve on the Park and Rec Commission.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Welcome, Fred.
Here come our colleagues back. I would give you a hug, but I can't reach you. Bye. All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is another public hearing. This one is, it says Verizon Cable, but I'm thinking it's Comcast.
Comcast.
Yes. I'm going, wait, everything I read was Comcast, so it's Comcast Cable Television Contract Renewal. If we have, I don't know whether we have people in the room or online.
Miles.
All right. So we have Mr. August, Attorney August, who's the, our towns council, and Mr. Franks, who is the representative from Comcast. All right. Let me start with my statement here. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Needham's Public Hearing on Comcast Cable License Renewal. I am Mary Ann Cooley, Chair of the Select Board, which is the cable license issuing authority under Mass General Laws, Chapter 166A. With me tonight are other members of the Select Board, Town Manager Kate Fitzpatrick, Town Cable Council Bill August, and Support Services Manager Miles Tucker, who have all worked closely with Comcast on the negotiation of a Needham Comcast renewal license. Notice of this hearing was published for two successive weeks in local newspapers, and copies of the legal advertisements are entered here in the Select Board packet. By way of background for the public, state law requires the holding of a public hearing prior to final action on a proposed renewal license, which shall include the opportunity for public comment on town needs, Comcast performance, and the proposed renewal license. Based on the information before us this evening and based on prior public hearing, the Select Board may take final action on and approve or deny the renewal proposal before us this evening. Public comments, if any, as well as questions to Comcast should be directed through me, and I will rule whether they are in order. Before hearing from the public, we will first recognize Miles Tucker from the office of the Town Manager. We will then accept comments from the public, if any, followed by Select Board discussion of the proposed renewal and a possible motion regarding final action on the proposed renewal. With that, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Chair Cooley. Back again for the second straight meeting with another cable license, which is fantastic. As you all know, there are three providers in Needham, Comcast, Verizon, RCN. We've completed RCN's license, which was a 10-year license in November. We, last month, completed Verizon's license, which is a five-year license, and this is our last of three, which is a 10-year license with Comcast. First, I'd like to recognize Attorney Greg Franks from Comcast, who's on here with us today. Greg's been an invaluable partner throughout this process, which, behind the scenes, these go on for about eight months, going back and forth between the company, between the town. And Greg has been extremely amenable to all our questions and just a wonderful partner. So I want to thank him and the team at Comcast for all of this process. Same again goes to Attorney August, who, as always, has guided us through this process. It's a complex legal one that is unique to Massachusetts here, and he brings a lot of expertise. And thank you, Bill. Another person I want to thank who's just downstairs right now is Mark Mandell from the Needham Channel, the Needham Community Television Development Corporation. Mark's an absolute subject matter expert who is absolutely invaluable in providing input and guidance on the technical aspects of this license, as well as the other two licenses. So him and the entire team, just can't thank enough for their expertise. A few details about this license. This is, as you noted, a 10-year license, which is fantastic. That's industry, industry-leading along with RCN. Comcast is agreeing to a maximum allowed by law of 5% of gross annual revenues as part of a franchise fee that goes to NCTDC. That's the Needham Channel. They are also providing $171,000 in capital funding to the Needham Channel over the course of this license. And part of, in addition to that, Comcast is willing to cover up to $20,000 to cover a conversion from standard definition TV, as it stands right now, to what's called SDSDI. Without diving into too many technical details, this brings standard definition television to near HDTV levels of clarity, and this is going to be covered by up to $20,000 per this license. On that note, there will be three channels that will be provided on the standard definition wavelength, none on HD. Comcast, to all municipalities in Massachusetts, they have a standard where they offer three channels. It could be that two are on SD and one is on HD. We are choosing to move forward and recommend that this board accept this license, which has three standard definition channels. It's important because we believe that it is important that even those at the most basic level of subscribership, at that basic cable level, have access to all three of the Needham Channel services, which are public, educational, and governmental, that P-E-G of PEG. So this allows everyone who's a subscriber to Comcast to subscribe to all three of those channels, which is important from that equity perspective, where even those, again, with the lowest level of service will get the full programming spread that the Needham Channel offers. And again, with the transition to SDSDI, we're bringing that near HD quality to our standard definition, to the standard definition of subscribers in Needham. So that's a, that's a big win across the board. Those are the big items from this license, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Let me see first if there are any questions from the public or comments. To the best of my knowledge, we've not received any public comments related to this matter via mail or email. All right. I see none. Are there questions from the board? I appreciate the matters that were negotiated in the contract. I think that the decision-making and the logic behind them makes a lot of sense to me. I had planned to ask if, if during the course of the contract, it made sense to move to HD if that could be facilitated? I don't know if there'd be a reason to do that, given the change to SDSDI or whatever it is, that acronym.
And I'll allow Attorney Franks or Attorney August to butt in and correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that this license has an opportunity for us to give Comcast notice should we wish to move one of those channels to HD, should technology allow us to more easily mirror or down gauge effectively from an HD output channel into an SD channel? Should we be able to do that? Right now, technology does not allow that to be feasible in frankly, the budgetary environment that we have with the Needham Channel. However, this license does allow us the option with, I believe it's 18 months' notice to tell Comcast, hey, we would like a com, an HD channel. And I hope that makes sense, and I think I'm getting a head nod across the board from the attorneys here.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, then I would be prepared for us to vote tonight, so I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board find that the cable franchise renewal proposal of Comcast of Needham, Inc. reasonably meets the franchise and cable-related renewal needs and interest of the public and town. In the Comcast of Needham, Inc.'s financial and technical qualifications and local programming channels, facilities, and services are reasonable to meet the town cable franchise needs. Find that the Select Board, as issuing authority for the town, votes to accept the renewal agreement with Comcast of Needham, Inc. effective December 18, 2022.
Second that.
Any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Thank you to both Mr. Franks and Mr. August, or Attorneys Frank and August, for their work and for everybody else who assisted in this renegotiation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move the appointments and consent.
Is there a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I should have asked if there was any discussion related to anything? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Our next item that's noticed for 6:00 PM is a public hearing on water and sewer rates. And for that, I think we have a few folks here. Mr. Davison, Mr. Retske. Water and sewer rates are always one of everybody's favorite discussions. I see Ms. Lustig is joining us online. Anybody else?
Just to remind the committee of the work I have before.
Light work.
So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Davison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, before I turn it over to the Chair of the Water Sewer Rate Structure Committee, John Tellarico, I want to, one, confirm whether or not we have. John Tellerico, I want to, one, confirm whether or not we have the other three members of the board that may be joining us by Zoom, if Tom Logren is there, John Terry, certainly, and Harold Berger. And I believe Harold did have a conflict that he couldn't even join by Zoom. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, the, we come before the board at the public hearing. Wanted to remind the board that tonight, you're hearing the recommendations of staff and from the committee relative to water and sewer rates, but that the board will not take any action on that until its following meeting, which is scheduled for August the 6th. The...
August the 9th, but yes.
August the 9th, thank you.
Coming on a Saturday, Dave.
It's a lot of work.
Dave probably is.
So, on August the 9th, and we, and certainly, the board will take any additional input that it would receive from the public relative to the proposal. As a reminder to the board, rates have not changed since the vote of the board back in June of 2019. And back at that time, in recognition that Coca-Cola was ending its bottling operations, which used a lot of water in town and conversely sewer, and paid almost its entire bill at the top rates, which effectively provided excess revenues to help subsidize rates for all other users, that those funds were going to have to be made up through rate increases on all other folks. At that time, the Water Sewer Rate Structure Committee came with a recommendation to the board to implement those rate increases over a three-year period, to which the board was in agreement with, and in set rates in 2020, with the understanding that rates would be going up again in '21 and fiscal '22. After that time, we had COVID. And with all the uncertainty with what COVID was going to do to the economy, certainly, at that time, even things as simple as public hearings weren't quite certain how that best was going to work. No rate increases happened in fiscal '21, and the same thing in FY '22. There was still some uncertainty as to where the economy was going, as well as issues with COVID. Here we are, things are slowly returning back to normal, and the reality is Coca-Cola has stopped its bottling operations. Costs continue to increase, that's just natural. And some of the things that the Water and Sewer Department rely upon are some of the areas where cost is increasing substantially more. That's in the area of energy, the energy that runs the distribution plants, the treatment plants, the cost of treatment chemicals for the drinking water, the cost of materials, unlike many of the services that the town delivers, which are people-oriented and are other people providing those services to the people. This is a very capital-intensive service. Water and sewer lines are expensive to repair, replace, and maintain, and the materials for doing that work, as well as the work of, whether it's private contractors or our own staff, the cost has gone up. So all those factors, as well as the last of Coca-Cola, we're at the point that we're going to need to increase the rates. The last thing I'll leave the board with before I turn it over to the Chair is that had those rate increases happened in '21 and '22, they were fairly close to what was estimated in terms of cost, that the rates plan that's being proposed to the board this evening is actually less than what the rates would have been already had that plan moved forward by about 3%. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to the Chair, John Tellerico.
Thank you. I do want to say that when we started reviewing the different options on the table, David was very thorough in providing the committee with multiple scenarios. I think we started out evaluating roughly eight scenarios with different combinations and varying levels of impact. We looked at, you know, the households affected in the various steps. We looked at the impact of, you know, simply doing irrigation increases. And after our first meeting, going through the initial combinations, the committee liked different pieces of each of the proposals. So what you have before you is really an extensive discussion between the committee, the various combinations, where we felt the impact was evenly spread across the residents of Needham, and essentially unanimously concluded that the recommendation before you is the one we were all on board. So I think typically, eight years past, we may have put two options in front of you. We did have lengthy discussion during our last meeting on a second one, and we, you know, concluded that the one before you is the one that is the right one for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Tellerico. So I don't know if there are questions from the board. To me, from reading the document, which is thorough, as we say always, from Mr. Davison, it does seem like a sound and a prudent proposal. I was wondering, on one sense, I do think the average customer was described somewhere as being the 10,180 cubic feet, but then on the charts at the end, it averages at 12,000, and a lower uses household is at 10,180. So there's a line somewhere in the document that made me think the 10,180 was an average.
The, Madam Chair, that's correct. The industry standard is 12,000 cubic feet of water per year. That's how cost comparisons amongst districts across the country, and specifically in the MWRA communities. The MWRA provides a report every year to compare all the communities within the district. Uses 12,000 cubic feet a year. Needham specifically's average household use, per the most recent DEP report, which is based upon calendar year 2020 usage, and that was the 2021 report, was 10,180 cubic feet. And what I provided you with was showing what the cost would be at 12,000 and at 10,180. The terminology, a low-end user, that table was a table of what the low-end uses were three years ago.
And that is helpful, because it also gives me the timeline, which says that it involved a few months of the pandemic, when water use was lower as people had left town. So that's also a helpful construct. The other thing that we're sort of tracking on, or maybe Matt and I are tracking on, and maybe everybody else is not yet, is this 65 gallons per person per day number. And of course, the concern is that at some point, the MWRA is going to come back and look to either sanction or impose restrictions if we are not at that number. And I would note that both, I think, the 10,180 and the 12,000 are both in excess of that number. Is that correct?
First, yes, correct, based upon the average household size in Needham. And some households, it could be. But based upon the household size in Needham, that would, both numbers exceed that number. And it would not be the MWRA, it's the Department of Environmental Protection that does that standard. I would defer to the Superintendent of Water and Sewer, Mike Retzky, relative to the most recent comment that the MWRA had relative to the availability of water, if the board was interested.
Mr. Retzky.
So, subject to that, the MWRA did send out a memo the other day, and in that memo, it was clear that they said that they have their, all their storage capacity up at the Quabin, which feeds us into Section 80, which we're currently drawing on. They're at 95% capacity. They don't have any issues with the water ban right now, nothing. They can supply every bit of water we need.
Terrific, thank you.
You know, as you recall, historically, we were under the 65 gallon per day limit, so we were implementing a non-essential outdoor water use restriction from 2013 until a few years ago, when the town gave up essentially its permit and relied only on registered water, which our attorneys believe is not, Commonwealth is not allowed to impose restrictions on. Those restrictions apparently are still, are coming, though. So we may end up in a situation where our registered water does get restricted in some way. So it's a very important conversation about how we might think about getting from here to there without, you know, dropping from 10,000 to below 65 gallons per person per capita per day. That's, I think, a broader conversation for the board to have.
All right, and one of the other things that we note is that the sewer use has continued to decline. People should understand that that actually makes the cost per user greater, because we do have to continue to maintain the infrastructure for the whole town. And so we are careful and thoughtful about those projects, but that will need to happen, and we do need to pay for that. I continue to hope that at some point, we might have, like, a cheat sheet for people that makes it clear for them and straightforward for them to go do that calculation. I was reading the fine print on my bill, and I could put it together, but I think it might be nice, maybe, if we can create a one-pager so that somebody could figure out, where do they stand on that 65 gallons per person per day? Because if it does become real, people will want to understand where are they? And of course, part of the challenge with that is we have always traditionally exceeded it in the summertime, that is the time of biggest water use. In theory, much of that water is going back into the water supply, because it's irrigation water, so it's going to the ground, but it still counts toward that overall number, so all complicated. Any other questions?
Well, this may be part of a different conversation, but I can't help but notice that Needham's annual water use on a multiple-year basis is significantly higher than any other town but Lexington on this table. And I'm just wondering if that's a conversation that we need to have, whether that's in relation to the 65 gallons or not, about why? And how to, whether that's an issue? I'm curious if anyone knows, like, offhand, why we would be such an outlier with this table of comparable cities, towns?
I'm not looking at that chart. Do we know what page it's on?
Page eight, that's the report.
Table five. The average water use is, I mean, Needham is second only to Lexington, and it's thousands of gallons higher. I'm just, I'm not asking you to solve this, I'm just curious why that would be.
There are many factors that do influence that. And one thing is true, communities that have more diversity in its housing in terms of number of units tend to have lower consumption.
Your lawn.
So with large, lawns certainly is one of the factors, but it's not the only factor. But there's just something about large housing units, multifamily units, that tend to use less water per capita than if all those individuals were living in two families or single-family homes. I'm sure there is papers on why that is, but that's certainly one trend. Then, another trend is, of course, whether or not there are restrictions on water use. Needham has not placed any restrictions in the last few years, and indeed, that's, Needham's started trending upward again in terms of its average usage since the time that the mandatory water restrictions were eased. The other factor, I think, is probably more telling, because certainly in some of these communities, there could be also the change in the housing stock. Clearly, we know in Needham, a lot of the ranch homes and Cape homes have been torn down, and larger homes have built, and they just have more, they just have...
More people using water.
No, because that, that is another factor, is this is looking at average household, but not how many people are in that particular household. Needham's household count is higher than some of these other communities, so that's another factor. But I think what's always good is, and interestingly enough, this evening, you're going to have, on another agenda item, have a talk about how Needham is doing compared to itself over the years, which is a good way of measuring yourself, is looking at Needham, how it's done compared to itself. You noted the town of Lexington, which is higher than us, but if you look at how Lexington's doing to the way it was doing in 2006, they're still down. Even though it's higher, they're still trending downward. But Needham was only one of three communities that is, as last year, consuming more water than it did in 2006. And of the three that are using more, Needham on a percentage basis is higher. So certainly, I think the household size has one factor. The mix of housing in the community is a factor. And, of course, the size of their lots, lots, not in itself, but lots that they're trying to maintain grass.
And I would add to that, that there's little public awareness and consciousness about water conservation. So, I mean, you walk around town, you drive around town in the morning and the evening, and people are watering brown lawns multiple times a day. I could tell you, as a parent, my girls don't think about, you know, water usage. So I think that probably contributes, contributes as well.
Thank you, that was a very thorough explanation, I appreciate it.
I would have said, Dave, to add on that, I believe that Needham has added more households than Lexington, which would be a factor in that increase, both households and people, right?
I think it's size of houses, because your average in itself wouldn't necessarily change, because if you have more households, you have more households to divide the average usage over. So it's really household size. But it's a growing community, as we know. Now, with, we have official data from the US Census, Needham had a higher percentage growth rate than some of the communities that we're compared to.
And if I recall, we actually don't have the ability to insert something in the bill that might relate to water conservation, or is that an option for us?
Oh, that's certainly an option of inclusion. And in fact, well, first, simple answer is yes, we can do that. Secondly, I believe the Water and Sewer Department actually does a public education as well, as well as there is an annual notice that goes out. That's not to say that we can't and shouldn't do anymore, but the town itself has been proactive in trying to stress the importance of water conservation. And as noted, and in fact, in the rate recommendations, somewhat representative of that concern, the committee was more supportive to increasing the irrigation rates on a percentage basis than the domestic or the inside use, because that's not as discretionary as irrigation is for most people. And hence, I'm certainly not speaking to the Chair, but I think that was one of the considerations why there was a higher percentage increase in the irrigation rates versus the indoor use.
And this might be not an appropriate comment for this discussion, but if we're talking about education, mailers may... talking about education, mailers may not be the right venue to reach the people that we want to. And maybe to the extent that the town can use social media, that might reach more individuals.
Thank you. Thank you for all of this work. Just a couple of things on, on this topic and then on the numbers here. It's been a balancing act. And I know we talked about conservation, we talked about it tonight, but getting out of that water ban was really part of it, was to make sure that if water, we use more water so that the rates would come down. And if we did have that water ban, we start using less water than prepare for these numbers to go much higher. So I just want to keep everything in perspective. Conservation has a price. I'm not saying we're not willing to go that way, but we just have to remember how we got here and what was driving it. And then we're talking about an increase here. And just to summarize, 2% for the primary meter on all steps, right? And then 5% on the secondary is the proposal. I'm all in favor, as was discussed, of putting on the secondary meter, a greater increase. It is discretionary. I was all in favor in the past of putting it up on the higher step, like step four, which I know was discussed because I think you do get to a point where that is also discretionary. But I would say overall, you know, on balance, you did a lot of, I looked through some of these scenarios and, you know, it makes you dizzy after a while, but it clearly did make you dizzy. And thanks again, Dave. But I think this balanced proposal is, is a good way to go, pending hearing from the public. So, thank you.
Mr. Keen.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all this work. It's a lot. As we're looking at the water bills, and I wonder, since there's the data there, is there a software in which you could actually graph consumer use? So people could see where they rate or how they're hitting their numbers over time. It's the same data, I just, it might be software issue. But I know like Eversource does it with gas and a lot of that.
It is software. And I don't think we're prepared to give an intelligent answer tonight, but we'll, but we'll come back.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Nelson?
Absolutely. So thank you for all of the work that you put into this. I know I sound like we're repeating what everybody else said. So my question is, as far as from like an environmental impact, when, when do we cross the threshold where we should be concerned as far as what we're doing in the usage that we are consuming with this? And then, I may not have an answer tonight, but what, just thinking about recommendations on, you know, public education is one of them. The rates that we're using to make people more aware, do they, I'm not saying this, but I'm saying, would they need to be higher for people to take it more seriously? Like where have we thought about that? Or where are we with that as far as what we're doing to sustain the place that we're living in for a long period of time?
Well, first, as the superintendent of Water and Sewer had said, is our availability of water is good. It's not stressed. And Needham has, is, has the fortune that not every other community on the list is that it has its own water that it produces and also can purchase from the MWR. That's a luxury many communities don't have. Certainly, if there are environmental quality problems with the drinking water because the wellfields are taxed, that would be something that would stress the need to conserve water and try to reduce discretionary use. Certainly, some of the nearby communities are doing that for that very reason. So those are certainly two factors to know that discretion, trying to encourage people to use less water. Cost is certainly a factor, but the irony has been, and the longer two members, Chair Cooley and Select Board Member Borelli will recognize, it seems like when we go up on the prices higher, water use increases. It's, there's, there's no rhyme or reason, but other than, I think back to my college days and my business marketing, as I guess it's, marketing makes something seem precious by increasing the price, people want it more. But I, I don't know that there's.
People are reinforcing, and they're gonna pay for it.
And, and Madam Chair, I've been doing a lot of talking and I just want to make sure that we're not bypassing Ms. Lustig, the Director of Public Works, who also has perception on this.
Thanks, Dave. I agree with most of the items that Dave presented to you as far as Needham having the foresight to make sure that we have a diverse water source in our town so that we can provide, even if one particular area is stressed. We also do provide our own water and we have a resource to be able to, we, we don't have some of the same issues that some of our neighboring communities have had with some water PFAS contamination. And I think that's also been maybe one of the reasons why we have had higher consumption than some of our neighboring communities, since they are enforcing water restrictions because they don't have the capacity that Needham does to provide water to its residents. So I think those are the considerations we have. And we did put out a notice last week to the residents through our newsletter, just reminding them that the area is in a drought. And just to try to implement best practices like we do in our Public Works Department when it comes to managing our own green infrastructure and trying to conserve water as much as they can, given the circumstances of this particular drought. I think the challenges we've had in the past with this artificial restriction of 65 gallons per person per day is that that had no tie-in to the amount of drought condition we had. It was simply a restriction that was there, even if we had lots of rain. And it was hard for people to understand. I think right now, given the fact that we know it hasn't rained for a while, and people can see the drought in their plants and in their grass, I think it's a little bit easier to get people to buy in when they see that there's a need for it as opposed to just imposing a restriction. So we're trying to get the message out there in a friendly way to encourage people to limit their water and certainly to water their gardens in a more conscious manner.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Lustig. And Karis, I have to say, welcome back. It's good to see you.
Welcome back.
To be back.
If there are no further comments, then.
Did you see public comment? It's a public hearing.
Is there anybody from the public who's here to speak right now? I was actually gonna make a different point about public input, but, or anybody online who wishes comment? So what, the note that I had written to myself was just to remind people that this is a public hearing and we are not voting this evening, but we will vote at our next meeting. So if people do have comments, please feel free to send them to selectboard@needhamma.gov. And we will be happy to take them into consideration as we come forward to the next meeting. But meanwhile, I thank you for what looks like a good recommendation based on the information that we have available to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you all. Much appreciated.
All right. It has been a very long six o'clock. And it's still six o'clock, but I'm going to say thank you to Michael Gendron and Caroline O'Connell. So if you would please come up and join us for the transfer of an all alcohol inkeeper license as our next item of business. Thank you for your patience over the last hour with everything that was before us tonight on one of our summer evenings. So if you would please tell us what results in, what causes the request to transfer this license.
Sure. I'm Caroline O'Connell. With me is Michael Gendron, who's the proposed manager, but even though he's been acting manager of the licensee. So you don't have to read through the giant sack of paper I gave you. I'm just gonna do a very quick recap of the transaction. I think nobody wants to read a 400-page purchase agreement. So I'm here seeking approval of a transfer of a license from Needham 365 Bev to 365 Management Company. That is the parent company of the current licensee. Those two entities will be merged together once this is all approved, and the license is gonna move up to the parent company. The reason for this transaction is that the, the hotel in which the license resides is being acquired by two real estate holding funds, about four levels up from this license in a holding company. So the new ownership structure is going to be 25% of the current holders. A group called Tower Brook Funds is going to own 55%. And then a group that's called RFM is going to own the remaining 20%. These two funds are enormous funds with structures that look like some sort of forest. So we have applied for a waiver for disclosure for those entities because nobody owns more than 10%. Nobody has any controlling interest in the licensee. They're, they're very high up investors that like to remain out of the, out of the management of these licenses. There's no proposed change to the current premises. There's no proposed change to any of the operations. Michael is with us. We thought that he had, had been appointed the license manager, but apparently that paperwork was not put in, I think, because, or it was during COVID. And so we're now here doing this, even though he has appeared before this board before. So you all know him. He has, you know, years of experience in the hotel industry. He's tips trained. He's a Massachusetts resident. He's aware of the laws. And I think that's, that's kind of a very quick recap of the, of the transaction. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
That sounds like a fair recap to me. Are there any questions? I know that, that Michael has had the history of how the town feels about our alcohol licenses and you understand that perfectly. Even though we do not have Dan Matthews here to channel that tonight, I'm sure you remember that.
The plan is to come back for things like this, that are administrative, only in the future.
That would be just delightful.
And no other reasons. As much as we all love you, we really don't want to be here.
All right. If there are no other questions, then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Section 12 All Alcohol Inkeeper License Transfer Application submitted by 365 Management Company LLC, DVA residents in, including the appointment of Michael Gendron as manager of record, and submit the application to the ABCC.
Second. In a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimously approved. Thank you for your patience and we appreciate your coming and speaking.
It's still six o'clock.
It's still six o'clock. It actually is now 6:10, believe it or not. And for that, I would welcome Katie King, our Assistant Town Manager.
Wow, 10 minutes. So nice to see you, Katie King.
We are so productive. Thank you, Chair Cooley, members of the board. Um, for audience members, just to bring folks up to speed, this is the third time that we've been before the board to talk about changes to the town's alcohol regulations relative to breweries. And this is a parallel process to the Planning Board looking at zoning amendment to go to town meeting in the fall. So since your last meeting, we have received some additional email comments. You have received them all. They're all positive. And we've shared most of them with planning staff as well, because folks have been weighing in on the locations that they'd like to see. The only substantive change to the red line, remember Keen, you had flagged in section 4.6.7, we had an erroneous exemption left in, that's been removed. And then there's been some grammatical changes, but that's it. Otherwise, the, the red line is what you saw last meeting. And we updated the fee schedule based on your feedback, I think from the first discussion, which was add a fee for the farmer series pouring permit at the same rate. It's currently $750, the same rate that section 12 licenses are, which are what restaurants and brew pubs would get. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, I'm happy to recommend for adoption the revised policy and the revised fee schedule.
Thank you, Ms. King. And I do agree, the, the feedback we've received has been pretty unanimously, really in favor of making this happen as quickly as possible from people's perspective. They're interested in this. We did hear a number of comments as it related to location. And of course, this body is not the one that writes the locations. We ultimately would support what the Planning Board recommended and, you know, have made sure that the Planning Board does understand those and have suggested to people that they express their desires for locations to the Planning Board. Are there any other comments from folks?
Thank you for doing all this. This is a lot of work.
There is a, a big team besides just me, but I appreciate that.
You have the biggest smile right now. I was like, is your smile exude?
Yep.
Madam Chair, I, I will say, I was speaking over the weekend with the City Councilor Newton, and they know that we're doing this. It's like, oh, I had this idea two years ago, and I see you guys are doing it so quickly. And we just had a nice conversation. I had to, you know, see how flexible Needham is and how we can get things done. I didn't like that. But no, it's all good. But it just goes to show a lot of work at, at one time. And very nice that we're at this point so quickly. So thank you.
Great staff.
Thanks to the team.
Okay. Would I have a motion, please?
Sure, sure. Madam Chair, I suggest that the board vote to adopt the revised regulations for sale of the alcoholic beverages effective July 26, 2022, and that the board vote to adopt the revised calendar year 2022 fee schedule.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. And we will continue on the path toward brew pubs. People should know that what will happen is that we are expecting that we will get zoning. The Planning Board will have a discussion about zoning and locations for brew pubs. We're expecting to bring that to town meeting this fall. So there's still a path before any of this might become a reality, but it's getting closer. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to 7:45, and it's 7:10 or 7:09, something like that. So 7:06, my iPad says. So if we could ask Mr. Davison to come back up, and I think Ms. Lustig, and I see Mr. Heller here for the Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Advisory Committee to discuss some charges and fees recyc, related to our recycling and transfer station.
Good evening again, Madam Chair.
Good evening again.
Yes. And we're coming before the board to recommend some minor changes to the recycling transfer station fees. There is no broad-based fees being recommended to be changed at this time. And just a reminder, when we say broad-based, we're referring specifically to pay to throw trash bags going over the scale and the stickers in order to enter the facility. There are minor changes to which were presented to the Recycling Transfer Station Advisory Board. And they heard a presentation from town staff and are recommending what is before you. But at that point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Heller, the Chair of the Committee.
Well, you know, that, I guess this came up before us twice. We met with it much earlier. But all the data wasn't shared. So some of the board members weren't supportive of making a, a, a positive vote without, not trusting, without seeing the actual numbers. So this next, this past meeting in March, all the data was, was presented. We look at things based on fairness. So some of the, the adjustments were around the changing of the fees for the, some residents who were coming in and it looked like they were bringing in commercial waste, but yet using a, a resident sticker. So I wanted to hold them accountable. They were also wanting to change the fees for tires and, and also make the, the change to consolidate, just simplify around the electronics, the monitors, and also raise those fees to be more in line with the fees that were charged for disposing of things. And we also look at the, the other communities around as well to make sure that we're within the market. So with all that presentation and that research, the board voted unanimously to, to raise these fees.
Terrific. These, again, these look like reasonable recommendations to me and, and the simplification. I'm a fan of simplification, making it easier for the people who are out in the field trying to deal with everybody who's coming by with their things. Are there any questions from members of the board? Ms. Frau?
Thank you for all this work. It's clear that a lot has gone into this. And, and I do have a question. I don't want to be.
It's all the super, I don't want to take any credit for it or the, you know, the committee, the superintendent does a, you've seen some of his PowerPoints the past. He presents a lot of information in a very organized manner and it makes votes very easy.
So I guess my question is not precisely about these fees. So I guess my question is not precisely about these fees, which I generally agree with. I did have a question about the paper throw program. And I understand, and the information in the packet was quite clear about matters of equity and so on. And I just wonder if if I would like to bring up that the plastic bag program increases the town's use of plastic and and throwing away this sort of non-recyclable item. And so I understand that the paper throw program is sort of used. We're no longer charging for stickers as a matter of equity and availability and so on. And I understand that. But I just wonder if if we have discussed whether or not using the plastic bags as as this alternative source of revenue is 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 something that we want to continue.
It's, to my knowledge, it's an alternative. It's not been brought up as a concern, the the bag itself. I personally, I would welcome, you know, not using plastic. I don't put my vegetables in plastic bags when I go to the grocery store because I try and limit my use of plastic as well. You know, I'm a strong advocate for the paper throw. You know, the paper throw gives financial incentives to our citizens to recycle. And of my, all my years on this committee, people need to be forced, you know, not just incentivized, you know, because sometimes that doesn't even matter. Okay, so that's my feeling. And there's, well, there's going to be a long debate in in this town coming up around all of that with the the studies before it, you know. Not necessarily looking forward to that, you know. Because I'm going to be very candid about, you know, my feelings about how people have to be forced, you know, to comply. You know, we also see there's a raise, there's a fee here increasing the violation for not using yellow bags because accountability and all of that is often a large, an often topic for us, which which frustrates me.
Well, on the same...
But our alternative, I know from other towns that other, that rather than use bags, they use tags. To use any bag you want, but you got to put a, you got to put a tag on it.
Sure.
Right? And and therefore showing that you've paid the fee, right? You know, is that, you know, the same fee for putting in a kitchen bag versus someone who comes in with the the big black garbage bags, you know? And what do we do about that? But, you know, I would, I would love to entertain that discussion on, you know, on town meeting floor like we did 25 years ago when we discussed yellow bags, you know, and and the implementation of paper throw. Some of you might not have been around for that, you know. That was a, that was a painful process as well.
And I don't want to, I don't want to derail the conversation that you're here to have, which is the rates. But I do want to say that I think...
Might all be moot.
There are, there are, I, I wonder if there is some way to leverage, like, some of these fees and penalties and the cost of a sticker or the non-cost of a sticker as a future conversation.
You asked, so therefore it will be an agenda item for the committee to discuss, right? And we'll, you know, come back and report.
I would love to, yeah, I would love to do that.
Do some research and see, you know, see what other people think and, you know.
Because, you know, I do think as a, you know, a matter of practicality, people are putting plastic bags inside plastic bags. And it's just like, ah.
If I might, if I might request that I don't be asked to do like this or a lot of research into the other communities and the pros and cons until we get past these other studies, because it all might be moot if if the town votes for curbside, you know, and just eliminates that sort of piece, which, you know, it then becomes a moot point.
That's all different things.
It's a very different...
So what I would have said is certainly we should discuss what the question is, and the committee should discuss it. We don't need to go directly to a town meeting floor for free. Yeah, recommendations are good.
I just want to make sure that if Ms. Lustig has any thoughts to share that might be helpful. And I'm not certain if the superintendent of Recycling Transfer Station, but if we could certainly begin with Ms. Lustig.
We're very early, which is...
Yes, in fairness to all of them, I don't...
They weren't prepared for this question, but yes.
Yeah, I can answer the question. I'm just going to be keeping my, my video off. The concern or the the mechanism and the reason behind the paper you throw bags is to reduce the amount of trash overall. So even though we are adding a small amount of trash to the stream, the goal would be to get all the other items recycled. But we certainly could take a survey and figure out what other communities are doing if there is a better material. I will say the fee going up is because there are quite a few residents who do try to get around our bag program. And the high visibility, the bright yellow bag, it makes it very easy for our staff to see it from far away. Something smaller like a sticker or a tag is just not going to stand out. And I've been there myself when I've seen residents who will hold a regular plastic bag and a yellow bag and wait for our staff to turn their backs to throw the the non-appropriately bagged material into the waste stream. So we want to make sure that there's still that accountability there. But we could certainly look into other materials. As far as I'm aware, pay-as-you throw is still considered the best practice to improve your recycling program and reduce your waste by the Mass DEP.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say one last comment, which is that, just that, and I appreciate that, Karis, thank you. I know that there's a movement afoot, both here in Needham and elsewhere, to say that we should stop using plastic bags in general, that this is not something that's healthy for our planet. And it's hard, I think, to impose that on others if that comes in front of us when we are not doing the same, when when we are, as a town, using plastic bags and asking others to use them on our behalf. So I just, I just, I would like to have a conversation in the future in more depth about perhaps changing to a compostable bag or something like that. But I do think that there's a, an essential sort of need to reexamine this issue.
Many years ago, we did, you know, a survey. We, we had some transitions with superintendent's time, and we had to spend a summer sort of processing with the community around perceived changes and so forth. And it was, we had like open meetings. It was one summer every, every two weeks. And we got a lot of feedback and surveys. And one of the things that came out was a reasonable request that I, that came out of that that I remember was people asked for, you know, there's two different sides, yellow bags. And people had asked for, could there be a larger bag? You know, one that fits in a, you know, garbage can, you know, a large garbage can, you know? And, you know, people were saying, you know, people who are committed to the process were looking for ease of the process. Okay, so, you know, if we went to something, you know, like your paper bags, you know, that it's not, you know, it's going to provide a little bit more difficulty around usage. And, you know, that that becomes a problem as well. But I remember that was a feedback.
So this is why we have committees, so that you can have this discussion. And I, I do hear the request for a compostable bag. But the first thing that I think of is how many people complain when their bag rips, which is a big challenge with compostable bags. So I'm sure there's some solution out there. I don't know what it is. I look forward to hearing more information in the future. This is an item that does have a vote required this evening, so I am hoping...
Madam Chair.
I might have a motion?
I have three for you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fraley.
Motion A, move that the board approve the proposed rate changes effective September 1, 2022, which are automobile tires $7.50, truck tires $15, and a convenience fee for illegal dumping without a pay-to-throw bag of $10. Second motion B, move that the board approves the consolidation of the computer monitors 15 inches or less, computer monitor greater than 15-inch flat-screen TVs, 15 inches or less flat-screen TVs, greater than 15 inches in television disposal fees, to be titled monitors at the rate be set at $20 per item effective September 1, 2022. Now, what was consolidation? Suggested motion C, move that the board approve the implementation of the following new fees effective September 1, 2022, fluorescent tube disposal $1 each, not more than 10 tubes per week, and small printers $2.50 each item.
Second, second, second.
And I'm just going to look, if there's no objection, I would like to take all three votes together. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. We approve the changes. We thank you for coming in, and we look forward to all the work that is already involved in the studies that are going forward and the new question that's been asked by Ms. Fra. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda this evening, 8 o'clock. I think we're not ready for, oh, actually, let me, let me take the 8 o'clock right now. At 8 o'clock, we did have a public hearing on a dangerous dog hearing. For those members of the public who have been following along on our dangerous dog hearing, we have, we received a tremendous amount of information this aft, late this afternoon from Ms. Razolaga. And we need to understand that information. But it does appear that she has secured insurance for Axel. She has had the behavioral analysis done that we requested, and we do have reports from the behaviorists. She has already undertaken some suggestions from them. We will be asking that she take seriously all the suggestions that come from the behaviorist. She has scheduled, and we have a letter from the veterinarian related to the neutering of Axel. So we do need to take the time to read and understand all of the documents. What I would actually like is a motion this evening to continue the hearing to August 9, at which point we're hoping that we can make a final conclusion. If somebody could make such a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
And second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just suggest or mandate that any further materials on this application be delivered to us, I'd say, the Thursday prior to our meeting, so that we can place them in our packet for our review. And anything that comes after that, we would not consider.
Well, actually, let me make clear.
Thank you.
Our current order does ask for a weekly update. And I guess I would like that Ms. Razolaga understand that we continue to ask for a weekly update of any new information or if there's been no change. And it needs to come, you're correct, it asks, I would expect to receive it the week prior to our board packet. So that would be helpful. But yes, receiving it all late this afternoon made it quite challenging to deal with for the meeting. If there's no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will continue the hearing to August 9. We are glad that that Ms. Razolaga has undertaken the actions that the board asked for back in March and April that they have now been undertaken. All right. We have our Director of Assessing. Is that an option to do? I know it's a little earlier than anticipated. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, thanks for inviting me.
Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce the board to our new Director of Assessing. Just to remind the board, the prior director retired back in August of 2021. And after, without any exaggeration, exhaustive search, Melissa came our way, and Melissa started as our Director of Assessing on July 11. I should note at this time that Melissa does affectionately like the name M in reference. And M's work history is very suited for the job here in Needham, Director of Assessing, having been in assessing from both the perspective of the expert in terms of running an office, most recently for the City of New Bedford, as well from a board member perspective in her community as well as private sector experience in the area of real estate. And without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Melissa, if I may.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate you all having me come. It's very, very exciting to be here. You, I'm sure, are impressed with the folks in the administration, starting with the Town Manager, Mr. Davison. Everybody's really amazingly well-prepared. And the interaction from department to department and the people within the departments is really impressive. So I'm sure you're all proud of them, and I'm really, really excited to be part of it.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Welcome to Needham. I, I do worry about your commute, and so I'm hoping that at some point it won't be quite so lengthy. I'm presuming it's lengthy now, but maybe it's not. But yeah, I looked at Free Town in New Bedford and thought, wow, wow.
It's a bit of a ride, but not bad.
Well, we're delighted to have you here. We've been looking for an assessor, and it's definitely needed. And I know Dave will be grateful. Beyond relieved. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we are happy to have you, M. And I feel like that long ride, a lot of music or thoughts to yourself or podcasts and things like that, to kind of make it smooth. But yeah, you're within good hands, and I hope you enjoy your time in Needham, and we're excited to have you work and be part of the community.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, might I add, Mr. Vice Chair, that M is quite a singer and does sing on all the way. So you have a, you have a kindred spirit.
I dabble, I dabble, M.
I believe Marcus would sing the whole meeting if he wanted. Any other comments?
Welcome to Needham. Also, I raised my eyebrows, is when you have experience with ransomware attacks. Yes, sadly, I do.
Oh, they do? I'm happy you do. It wasn't here.
Well, no, it wasn't here, and and hopefully it won't ever be here. But that experience actually is good on both sides of it, one of which is to help to avoid that sort of thing. It's, it's, it's a constant battle. And the IT staff, again, folks that you should be proud of of doing a really good job of keeping the network tied down and safe. And it's, it's actually a responsibility of every single user of a computer to maintain that safety and don't click on things that you don't know about. So, yeah. Thank you.
Well, we will look forward to you returning to speak with the board. We are scintillating. It's a scintillating topic of conversation when we discuss the rate hearing each year. And we will look forward to seeing you for that a little bit later this year.
Thank you. That's always an exciting time for everybody.
Yes, for every assessor, I'm sure. Your star turn.
Yes, thank you.
There we go, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.
Have a good night.
All right, Town Manager, we are up to the ICMA presentation. Will that group be ready? We're ready now? So we have a group who's online, and I guess, Kate, let me turn it over to you to introduce the group and what we are about to see. As Kristen works at moving everybody over.
So while we're moving people over, just some background. The town contracted with a program at the International City County Managers Association called Leadership ICMA. And this is a two-year program where the best and the brightest, and, you know, we've got even the best of the best and the brightest on our team from all over the country get together for this program to work together to learn leadership and to perform capstone projects at the end. There are over 100 graduates of the Leadership ICMA program. And if you look at the the composition of the Board of the ICMA and city managers across the country, there's so many of the members who've gone through this program. So we're great, great supporters of the program. Our Director of Public Works, Karis Lustig, and our Director of Human Resources, Chuck Murphy-Romboletti, both went through the program, and they were not directors at the time. So it's proven to help people move ahead in their careers. One of the things that we asked, that we contracted with ICMA to do for our program is to to see whether there are examples of employee benefits and recruitment and retention strategies, because everybody knows, any employer knows right now, it's the absolute number one priority of ours is to try to find... number one priority of ours, is to try to find any applicants for some position and top applicants to hire. So we have most of our folks up here. So I'll introduce Jack Daly, who's the, who's the lead on the team, or at least the one who does most of the speaking, the Assistant Director of Public Works in Georgetown, who also had a promotion while he was in this program, Jared Jones, Assistant City Manager of Panama City, Florida, Jennifer Pachotzka, the Assistant City Manager at College Station, Stephanie Rayes, Interim City Manager of San Marcos, Texas, another promotion, and Laura Savage, the Senior Program Manager at ICMA. So Jack, I'm going to turn it over to you and get out of your way. And, Kristen, are you running it or isn't? You're running a program. Great, so welcome, Jack.
All right, thanks, Kate. First, just quick sound check, make sure you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Excellent. And then I am going to try and share my screen here. Oh, looks like I'll need permission to share. Otherwise, I can shoot over and email the presentation to.
Marcus is going to sing for us while we wait.
No worries. While, while we're waiting, I just want to give a thank you on behalf of our entire team here. Kate did a good job introducing everybody, but really appreciative of Needham. They were, the, the town management, they were gracious hosts, specifically Chuck and Tatiana in HR, and then Kate has been outstanding, and she's well-regarded in the profession. She was a keynote speaker in one of our Leadership ICMA sessions, so y'all are lucky to have her, and we really enjoyed our time there. It was a little cold, I think one day it was 17 degrees, and, you know, we have representation from Florida, and Texas, and Southern Colorado, so only our Colorada was ready for the cold. But like Kate said, we were charged with kind of looking at best practices globally around recruitment and retention, and then we spent some time in Needham, meeting with your employees, to understand local interests and, and what things are off, being offered. Oh, looks like I can share now. Let me, let me try to do that. Okay, sorry, I'm out of practice. So, are you guys seeing that?
No, we did, though.
Oh, gosh.
It'll come back. I was gonna say, baby, come back.
Okay, how about that?
Yes.
Finally, thanks, y'all. Rough start. Okay, so Kate already went through our objectives. Here they are at a high level, and so we're very excited. We started this effort, like she said, two years ago, and here we are presenting to the Select Board. So this is our, our final effort here. So part of our kind of global analysis around current trends in recruitment and retention was to look at some best practices across all types of employers, and not just public sector, but all organization types. And as you can imagine, both the Society of Human Resource Management, as well as the, this entity called World at Work, which really does a lot of benchmarking around benefits, they've highlighted that everybody's struggling with labor shortages. So you guys are not alone in your struggle here with recruitment, recruitment and retention. As a subset of what Kate asked us to do, we're also asked to kind of look at diversity as well as programmatic offerings of the town and the HR department related to employee recruitment and retention. So those are some other things we'll speak to. Some of our big findings were making sure the role, the mission and role of Needham's Human Resources Department is really clearly defined. So poor HR folks, they're asked to do it all. Everybody points back to them when things don't go well, you know, why can't we find these people? Why are these people leaving? And it's really hard to carry the full brunt of everything everyone expects of their HR department. So instead of, you know, having them be in a constant reactive administrative role, we think would be helpful to move them more towards a strategic positioning. And what that involves is kind of offloading some HR, traditional HR responsibilities on, on hiring managers, so empowering and enabling hiring managers to do some of the work that historically has been thrown back at HR. We think the four functional areas that human resources can really focus on is recruitment and helping train employees on how to do their recruitment, right? Because the best person to find a police officer is probably the people who are already police officers, right? So helping enable departments to be recruiters, taking a big ownership role in onboarding and orienting new employees, that's a key touch point to really set the tone for organizational culture, is the, the first time an employee walks in the door. Keeping a handle on employee retention and understanding turnover rates and what employees want in terms of benefits and offerings from the town, and then having a role in employee morality and engagement. And part of that is doing employee surveys and then responding to those certain, human, those human resource surveys that go out across the city. So to do this, there's a small but mighty team in HR, I think there's four folks over there. We recognize that there would be a need for additional resources or offloading some current responsibilities to make sure that they can handle these requests. So the next thing we looked at, so we weren't specifically asked to look at compensation, but when you talk about retention and recruitment, the first thing people talk about are, is money. I mean, just to be very candid. So the, the historical focus of a lot of public sector organizations is to do, has been to do cost of living adjustments, but there is a shift to move towards market adjustments. So looking out across the market and seeing what are different organizations paying these like positions and making sure you're competitive within the market. There's also a recognition that the private sector is paying more for specific jobs, and there may be a need to kind of beat your public, beat market in the public sector to be competed, competitive in with private sector. I mean, I know everyone's struggling to find engineers and IT professionals, CDL drivers, so it's just a recognition that, that we do need to pay more. And then focusing on incentive pay, so giving people compensation for doing continuing education, that could be licensing or certifications, or going back to school, rewarding longevity, so as you stay, the, as you stay, you move up through your step program, and then rewarding high performance, so doing merit adjustments for, for folks who have high performance. And we also heard when we met with the folks in Needham, and then also in the research we did, recognizing and rewarding people who work different shifts, so either weekend shifts or overnight shifts. And then accelerated step programs or accelerated pay increases, again, for those high performers. So if you have really good folks, you know, taking a, a really hard look at making sure you're, you're working hard to, to keep them, because other agencies recognize when you have a high performer. And then involving your employees in the recruitment process by giving referral, referral bonuses, so if they help bring somebody on, compensating them for those efforts. The other thing, of course, is probably not going to be a surprise to anybody, but exploring as much as you're able, remote work options, or even dedicated remote work positions, this opens up the candidate pool immensely. If you need, need somebody to do a certain job, and they only really need to be in the office once a week, once a month, once a quarter, that, that opens up a, a big portion of the workforce. And then, of course, we recognize that there are jobs that just can't be done remotely, right? You can't drive a snowplow from home, but you can have flexible schedules. So either working four tens, or allowing different shifts or different times to increase time off, or allow employees to have some agency over what times they work is, is proving to be really valuable. And then other things, you know, really what we were asked to look at were, were Needham's benefit offerings. So one thing that came up in the, in the research was shifting to a paid time off bank, that would be in contrast to separate vacation and sick leave banks, just generally giving employees paid time off, they can use it how they choose. Of course, the accrual rates are different for paid time off. You accrue less time generally, but you're able to use it more flex, with more flexibility, right? The, the thing that happens is long-tended employees have these huge sick bank leaves that they can't use, so shifting towards a, a paid time off bank allows people to use more of their, their paid time off. Short-term disability insurance is a, a common offering that a lot of employers offer. So I know there's been, also been a lot of talk about paid maternal or paternal leave. Some employers are just offering unpaid but job-protected time off beyond what's required. So typically, you know, Texas is, I know, different than Massachusetts, but Texas is where my background's at, you know, 12 weeks of FMLA leave is what's standard, but some employers are offering more than that. Unpaid, but still your, your, your position is protected. Dependent care spending programs, so helping employees offset some of their childcare costs, and then some of the lower-cost benefit offerings would be something like identity theft insurance, personal financial planning services, pet insurance, you know, the town's buying power to offer these benefit offerings would help bring them to a, at a reduced rate versus somebody going out individually and getting them. And then small things like paid civic duty, so if you have to go vote or jury duty, you would get paid for those activities. And then we were really enjoying the highlight of this whole project so far has been our, our visit to Needham. So over two days, we met with 10 employee groups. The groups were sliced and diced all kinds of different ways. We really tried to get a good cross-section of all town employees, so people who were tenured with 10 or more years of service, to people who have six months or less service. We met with managers and supervisors, hard-to-recruit positions, and public safety. Our, our public safety group, we had the opportunity to have a, a focus group of ones, so Officer Broderick was outstanding. And then we also got a tour of your new public safety building, which was a fantastic facility. I took lots of pictures. I know the rest of our team did too, and brought back some great ideas for our police and fire departments back home. So one of the great things, I think, that y'all need to know is, we started the focus groups just cold, and we asked people, what's the best part about working for Needham? And far and away, what people said was, the, the people I work with, they're coworkers. People really like working for the town, but they really, really like the people they work with. So just a recognition that you guys have a, a great team and some really great people serving your community. And focus group data is hard to boil down, right? It's very subjective, it's all over the place, but, but surprisingly, there were kind of 10 things that emerged as recurring themes across the focus groups. So in, in no particular order, schools, so allowing employees, children, town employees, kids to attend Needham Public Schools, there's a recognition that Needham has great schools, and, and allowing employed kids to attend there would be a, a great benefit. Needham also benefits from being part of the bigger metro rail, but the, the hiccup comes when you get off the train, you know, some town buildings are pretty far from the stop. So figuring out that last mile transit issue, if there's a cohort of people who are riding public transportation, how can we get them to their workplace? Some jobs, and I believe in visiting with Kate, some of these have been addressed, but some jobs, I think specifically in public safety, have resident, residency requirements. So doing what you can to remove those barriers to entry for, for residence requirements. Then employees also asked a lot about employee plus one health insurance. So right now, Needham offers individual health insurance, or you can buy into the family plan, but there's no employee plus spouse, which would be a lower rate for that employee, but a bigger cost for the town overall, and maybe a bigger cost for other employees. It's something that came up, though, especially in the more tenured groups who don't have, you know, kids, dependent children. Of course, cost of living is a, a big factor, so housing assistance, employees did bring up paid family or parental leave, childcare assistance, surprisingly, you know, something that aligned really neat, nicely with the, the contemporary research as a, as a PTO bank, so the accruing different buckets of time employees, some employees thought just one bucket of time that they could use how they choose would be great. Front-loading benefits upon hire, what that means is, you know, when you get on in Needham, and likewise in a lot of cities, towns, you have to accrue time before you can take it. So you really can't take any vacation until you've worked there six months or a year, because you're accruing, you know, six hours every pay period. There was a, amongst the, the newer tenured employees, interest in maybe front-loading a week or two weeks of vacation time, so you could, you know, take a week in those first few months of employment, or take a few days here and there. And then recruitment came up, and, and there was really more on trying to develop a local pipeline, so reinvigorating the summer ambassador program, so cohort of interns that would intern in different departments, and maybe some leadership component, so they would meet once a month to talk about different things around the town, or learn about different service offerings, and then just some simple, like QR codes at the transfer station or on trucks, just to keep it at the forefront of people's minds as they see employees working out in the community. Hey, the town is, is always hiring. So here we are, this is kind of the, the meat of, of our recommendations, but really, the first recommendation is around the, the HR departments, so defining the mission role of the town of Needham's Human Resource Department to position them to be more strategic, and shifting away from that administrative role to a more strategic, proactive role, which would help with employee onboarding, ongoing employee communications, organizational development, employee recognition programs, and, and ensuring employees understand all the kind of programmatic offerings of the HR department. And then part of that is also helping HR train hiring managers to recruit for more diverse or underrepresented talent pools to help address shortcomings related to recruitment and retention. And this dovetails nicely with expanding and implementing DEI initiatives. So all the best practices say that, you know, if you broaden the net, those efforts are really interrelated, and the success in one, you know, more proactive recruitment drives success in the other. The next recommendation is around benefits, so a lot of these, we, we spoke to, but the Needham Public Schools, addressing the last mile transit issue, resolving residency requirements, employee plus one benefit offerings, looking at housing assistance, paid family or parental leave, childcare assistance, paid time off bank, front-loading paid time off at, at higher, and then a, a more robust summer, or summer ambassador internship program. Again, looking at incentive pay, so adjusting the compensation philosophy to be in more incentive-based, to encourage continuing education, longevity, high performance, and employees participating in the recruitment process. One, one other thing I forgot to mention is, you know, part of this training and making sure hiring managers know that they have a very active role in recruitment and retention, is making sure hiring managers know that they're empowered to place new recruits at higher pay grades based on experience. So that's something that's a, a So that's something that's a a practice that's emerging in in the research. So, you know, if you bring on somebody who has 10 years of experience, they should be that experience should be recognized and compensated for appropriately. So recruiting, so just exploring options to adjust recruitment strategies. So encouraging and advertising your workplace flexibility, right? So the jobs that are flexible, highlighting that early in the in the recruitment efforts, targeted recruitments. Specifically, we we contemplated for veterans, historically underserved communities, community and technical colleges, and then high schoolers. You know, there's a lot of kids who are recognizing that college may not be the the best thing, but going directly into the workforce is is a great opportunity and the town is a great place to do that. Developing more robust internship program, I've spoken about this a couple of times. And and again, training and equipping, equipping and hiring managers to think through all the different places that they can recruit for and and really recruiting in diverse and different places helps drive equity and inclusion issues that are, I know the town is trying to address in other other areas. So I'll leave it with, this is very simplified, but just a way to kind of organize the recommendation. So it's an impact effort matrix. So looking left to right is the impact of the effort. We're very excited about our recommendation, so we don't think any are low impact. Some are kind of in that medium category. And then looking from bottom to top, it's it's low effort versus high effort. So as you go high, you go up into the right, that's a high impact but high effort. Low and to the left would be low impact, low effort. And then we know there's a lot of technical work that really town staff would need to dive into, but we did assign, we we know that Yelp Yelp dollar signs are really a handy tool. So just putting dollar signs, so understanding and recognizing that some of these do have a a cost associated with them. And with that, I know I have spoken a lot, I can't say enough good things about our leadership ICMAT team, the town of Needham, and and really appreciate the the time you all have given us to, given us this evening. I'm going to answer any questions.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Jack. So that was that was interesting. The one of the things that I was thinking about handshake for recruiting college kids. Is that something else that you guys looked at or are you seeing that used in other locations? I think we had a discussion at one point with some members of our HR department about that, just turning over all the rocks.
Handshake, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first part of what of your question.
I just asked about handshake as another source for where we're looking for people. Although I I don't know if we've incorporated that, I know it was something that we talked about at Nwari at one point.
I apologize for my ignorance, I'm not familiar with the handshake.
So handshake is a system that college students are on, a lot of college students nationwide. It's certainly not universally used, but it's used by many, many institutions. So it's one place that employers can go to get their openings advertised to a very broad audience. So it just seems like some a tool that could be in the arsenal also.
Absolutely. I'll I'll circle up with Kate and Chuck and make sure we we add that to the recommendation.
Okay, and from your impact chart, did did you have some of those that you would have classed as more low hanging fruit that you would have definitely advised, you know, implementing immediately versus midterm? What did you think was the easiest to implement in addition to being, you know, thinking about the cost aspects of it?
Yeah, so I think one has already been addressed, so the residency requirements for certain positions, doing what you can, just recognizing that Needham does have a high cost of living and not everyone can live there, removing that barrier, and I think that's being addressed. I think kicking off the Needham School eligibility eligibility conversation would be a key thing. And I'm not sure how much of a cost that would be if it's that's more of a just kind of administrative hurdles that management would need to work through. And then I think one of the the easier things is the summer ambassador internship cohort. So there's there's a history of that in the town. And so it would just be appropriately resourcing time to to develop that program because that is, that creates your pipeline for new recruits, for especially those hard to fill or hard to recruit for positions.
Thank you. Other questions for my colleagues?
Sure, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for this presentation, a lot of material, great team. I guess when I look at it, you have two competitors, right? You have private sector businesses that are trying to pull employees away. And then you have other towns, municipalities that are trying to, you're competing with for employees. So I guess my question, I think you answered one of them as far as what can we offer against the private sector that would make it, you know, better to come to Needham? I've always thought, you know, benefits, pension, some somewhat job security. But I think if you added like that school incentive where a private company can't say, okay, you can now, you know, your children can go to school here or other items. I'm just trying to come up with, you know, what are those objects that a municipality can have an advantage over private sector? Because I always feel in my discussions of the private sector, especially now, has a has a large advantage over municipalities as far as hiring. So I guess maybe the school, I don't know if there are other things that you think that we we really have an advantage versus the private sector?
I would, so yes, I think the schools, I think the stability, right? So when there's a downturn, municipal municipalities are less likely to let go of their employees, especially Needham. So what was interesting, something that was highlighted a lot in our focus groups. So besides, you know, people love their coworkers, they also more than, actually a bunch of times, people highlighted Needham's attractiveness, why they came, why they like Needham is because of your financial stability, your predictability and the resources to, you know, really deliver great services to the community. So I I think the the one thing that Needham has that not a lot of other towns in the area may have is the ability to to brag about how great you are and that's that's attractive. You know, if you want to, if you're going to drive a snowplow, right? It's nice to drive a nice snowplow and and you all.
Great, thank you.
Could I add, Madam Chair, I I know, Jack, you you talked about this too. It's the one thing, another thing that we have that the private sector doesn't have is our mission, right? I mean, we are here, people come here because they do want to make an impact on other people's lives. And, you know, it's not the same in all private sector. So we talked about that quite a bit when when you were here in the focus groups. People really liked being in a place in local government generally where they could make a difference in other people's lives.
Absolutely.
Pretty easily too, right? Pretty, you know, well, maybe even a one on one conversation or, you know, discussion or something that you do internally really has a very large impact for the citizenry. So that that's a great point.
Thank you to Jack and everyone else involved in making this happen over the last two years. The question that I had is, what I saw that was so, so high was, you know, the opportunity to work with the coworkers as far as what makes people happy. For the things that are a little bit of lower, were there any suggestions or solutions or ideas on how to make those better that came from that?
I appreciate the question and how the the data was displayed. So really, these weren't really negative things. The question was, you know, what is the best part about working for Needham? So, you know, the the thing that's lowest on our chart is public service. And all that means is when people said the best thing about working for Needham, public service was the positive thing that came up the least. So I I I don't know that that is necessarily, you know, trying to get people to respond and say public service needs to be highlighted more. I think it's more of a, gosh, if you want to work at a place where you like the people you work with, come work at Needham, right? Like we we are coming up with, you know, the themes around our recruitment marketing by, you know, just echo what employees say they like about working here.
Absolutely. So they're all good things. It's just that that was the resounding thing that most people agreed on, but nothing was negative. Okay, I just wanted to, that makes more sense. That that makes me happier to hear.
Any other questions? Then Kate will look forward to where how we take this forward and what what results from the recommendations that the group has turned up. So thank you to Jack and everyone on the team for the work that you've done for Needham here.
Well, thank you all very much. This is really a unique professional development opportunity. I know I speak on behalf of our whole team and and really appreciate the time. And and I mean it when I say it, you guys have a really special thing there in Needham and and looking forward to watching y'all in the coming months and years.
We'll look forward to the next trip. You can come to the RGS again in the freezing cold.
Yes.
Windy up there.
That's a date.
Yeah, thank you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to our next presentation. In case anybody wonders, we are in the middle of the summer. We haven't met, so we're like piling everything from, you know, a whole month's worth of things into tonight. And so we carry on and I want to invite Cindy Roy Gonzalez to come join us right now for the National Community Survey Presentation. So we are back surveying again and we'll see what we've learned next.
Thank you for having me. It dovetails nicely because now I get to brag about how great Needham is or how great people think Needham is. So thank you. So I am here tonight to present on the results of the 2022 Community Survey. This is a survey survey we've been doing back since 2008 or six. We missed it in 2020 because of the pandemic, so it's about four years since the last one has been done. In that time, Pollco, which is the company that we work with on our polling, has merged with the National Research Center. So in the past, it's been referred to as the National Citizen Survey. So if you go back and look at our website, you'll find it under that. It's now up there as the Community Survey. So I'm going to go ahead, Kristen, you've got it up. If you can go to the third slide, that'd be great. Or sorry, page three, next one. Great. So we launched this survey in April of 2011. It is a randomly generated survey. So Pollco determines based on the addresses that they get from the postal service who they send the surveys to. 630 residents received the survey, 23% responded, which is actually in line with what we should expect. So we should feel confident in that response rate. The margin of error is 4% on all of these. And the benchmark, we benchmark our results against, or they benchmarked it against 600 communities nationwide. Following the formal survey, we also provided the survey online to all residents. So all residents had the option to weigh in. Those results are separate from the randomly generated list. And that allows us to make sure that this is really a scientific survey. But we do have input from all residents who wanted to participate. Next slide. Okay, so some of the highlights, key takeaways. 95% of respondents rated Needham as an excellent or good place to live. 92% rated the quality of life as excellent or good and 82% rated the quality of services as excellent or good. The majority of residents perceive the town to be incredibly safe. In fact, far safer than most of the other communities that were surveyed. And that's a trend that has consistently been the case since we started doing this survey. Inclusivity, which we got to a bit more through some custom questions, is both a strength and an opportunity for continued growth in Needham. And as was referenced in the the HR survey, Needham's economy is strong, but we do have some, we do have some challenges when it comes to affordability, not surprising. Next slide. You'll see in these next handful of slides, the way that this is set up, the first batch is areas in which Needham has exceeded that national benchmark against those 600 communities. And then we'll talk about some areas where we might be a little bit lower. So Needham is a place to live, 95%. We are ranked 22 out of the 403 communities that also included that question in this survey. The survey has a standard set of questions that are used for all the communities, but communities can opt to eliminate questions or to add their own questions. So that's why you'll see some difference in the the numbers. That puts us in the 94th percentile compared to the other communities. Our neighborhood as a place to live or your neighborhood as a place to live, 94% positive, 13 out of 335, 96%. Needham is a place to raise children, we're in the 97th percentile. Reputation, quality of life and sense of community are all in the low 90%. You'll see there's a couple of little footnotes where there is an asterisk. Those are improvements over the last time we ran the survey in 2018. And then when there is a hashtag, it's a new question included in the survey this year. Next slide. So specifically in the area of safety, as I as I mentioned, Needham is sort of off the charts when it were compared to the other 600 communities, 99, 98, 100. We ranked number one in terms of safety and property crime, number two, safety from violent crime. So great news in there, I think. And please stop if if you need to ask me questions because I want to try to go through this relatively quickly. Next slide. Okay, health and wellness. Again, low 90s, low 80 on quality mental health care. I think we all know that that continues to be a challenge, not just in Needham, but statewide and nationwide. But that being said, we are still outperforming many, many communities. Economy, as as we mentioned, the overall economic health of Needham is great. We rank in the 95th percentile and Needham has a place to work, 90, 91st percentile. Next slide, mobility. Traffic flow on major streets, I just personally was surprised to see that this is an improvement over 2018. So that's great. We rank in the 82nd percentile for that. I'm I'm actually curious how much of these mobility changes have been impacted by COVID. Ease of public parking is is better than it was in 2018. I think just walking around the town, you can see that that's true. Ease of travel by car and ease of walking are also better than 2018 and outrank a number of other communities. Cleanliness and air quality in our natural environment is also high. Next slide. Education, culture, arts uniformly positive. Next slide, general governance. So here is where we look at how we are providing services and how people feel about the actual town government. 89% believe Needham does a good job at welcoming resident involvement. The confidence in Needham government is high, 91th percentile. People believe that we generally act in the best interest of the community, that we are honest, that we treat residents fairly with respect and that the customer service delivered by Needham employees is high. So good things there.
Can I make a slightly different, because I would read that a little bit differently, okay? If we can go back to that. So the overall customer service number, absolutely, you know, very high ratings at 93% and 94th percentile. You know, for me, when I read this and I read the job Needham government does at welcoming resident involvement and you see 66% positive, which is the 89th percentile, right? I recognize percentile wise, it says we're doing better than other communities. But the, you know, 34% that would not rate us as positive there are all the things that we read on Facebook every day and Nextdoor that don't like something that's happened in town. So I think they're the people who keep it real all the time and try to keep us focused on how we're going to improve. But, you know, I I recognize it's a relative thing. The answer is there are a lot of towns that people are a lot of less satisfied. But, you know, I, I recognize it's a relative thing. The answer is there are a lot of towns that people are a lot of less satisfied with, even more so than they are with Needham. So I just think it's important to recognize.
I would take this survey over Facebook any day. So as far as.
Honestly, that's what is nice about this is like, this is actually people who are not just on Facebook, but people who might not be on social media whatsoever, who took the time to respond to the survey, which was pretty lengthy. Um, so people who are at least invested in, in what the government is doing. I'll also say sort of just anecdotally, I think if, there's always this perception that people are distrustful of government, whether it's local government or federal government or state government. But your point is well taken.
And I think we're in a particular time of distrust. So it's sort of interesting. I don't know where we ranked on these percent wise. Previously, I didn't go back to look at that, but it might be a little bit interesting, given the general increase in distrust in government that exists right now.
Okay. Next slide. So this is the, um, the sort of service delivery, uh, section where we have again exceeded the national benchmark. Police services, crime prevention, animal control, emergency preparedness, um, and code enforcement. Code enforcement was a new one this year. So glad to see we, we ended up, uh, doing well, though I think that code enforcement may be a hard thing for people to understand even really what that is. So it could account for the 62%. I don't, they, the, the question is very simple. So it's really open to interpretation, um, by the person who's responding to the survey.
They may not know what they're responding to.
Correct. Yeah.
And we, we may not know how we're reading that as a result too.
Yeah. So that's a little.
Generally speaking, code enforcement is, um, in a more urban environment where you might have, you know, broken windows and things like that. So are, are, are your inspectors going out and making sure that those kinds of things are fixed? It doesn't tend to be the biggest issue for Needhamites to, to worry about. So, but there, there are anomalies in the study, which we'll see a couple more funny ones.
But I like the snow removal number.
Yes. That is a good one. Um, okay, next slide. Uh, natural environment, the drinking water, um, is pretty positive. Um, affordable high-speed internet, stormwater management, sewer services, all good. I'm not sure we have much to do with affordable high-speed internet, but we'll take that for it here.
We just negotiated contracts with.
Okay. Uh, next slide. Uh, health services, um, ranks really high. So, um, I think COVID brought to light the, the very well-resourced, um, health and wellness services that we, that we do have and we do provide. Um, the library is also another one that, um, is outstanding. Next slide. So sense of civic, uh, community, sense of civic and community pride. Uh, this was, I, I was surprised, not surprised, but to see it so high compared to other communities. Um, people talk about Needham being a great community to live and, um, you'll see later on in the survey. People feel positive about their neighbors by and large. So, um, that I thought was just a, a nice data point. The neighborliness of residents, um, again, high on the percentile, but 78% like to see. So you can interpret that in different ways. Then it asks whether, uh, the individual has contacted, contacted the town for help or information. That tend, that is lower and that's, you know, sort of uniformly lower, um, among all of the communities where this question is asked, but compared to, uh, the communities, we are much higher.
Yeah. That struck me as not a value question, the survey. Did you contact it? Did you not?
And that could be a positive thing or not a positive thing, depending on how you look at it. Watched a local public meeting, 35%. So that's obviously super low. Um, however, it is higher than in the past, which I think now that we have all of our, our meetings, available to people to watch at home. I think that's, we're getting that, right? Like it's ticking up. Truly.
Yeah.
Next slide, mobility. Um, so this just asks about people's habits, uh, using public transportation instead of driving. Compared to a lot of communities, uh, our residents do that and walking, um, or biking instead of driving. I think again, we saw a lot of, an increase in this during the pandemic, which, um, maybe has stuck as we've sort of returned to normal. Okay. One slide here. I will say there is only one slide here because compared to most communities, there is not a lot where we fall short. Cost of living, I think, again, we all know that Needham tends to be a much higher cost of living community, um, when compared to other communities nationwide. Affordable housing, um, a variety of housing options. And then this, I, I don't even know how we got to 42%, quite honestly. Garbage collection. Yeah. I did talk to our, uh, folks at the RTS and assured them that I, I don't think the 0% is because they're doing a poor job at what they do. It's just that we don't actually offer curbside pickup. So, um, we left the question in there anyway. So I'm going to move on to this chart. So I just want to explain this chart because I know it might be a little bit hard on its.
The second chart of this type tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know these were so popular. Um, so this chart shows how, it shows residents priorities against the service delivery, the quality of services being delivered. Um, and you really want those two things kind of matching up. So the way you want to look at this is if you drew a line, I wish I had a little pointer, but if you drew a line from the lower left-hand corner, diagonally to the upper right-hand corner, the things that fall sort of along that diagonal line are where we are meeting both quality and expectation. And so if you, so community design, inclusivity, education, arts and culture, utilities, economy, that sort of line there is where things are sort of lining up the right way. If you look in the right lower, um, uh, corner, that's where, uh, residents are saying, this is what we believe is important. And the quality might not be where their expectations are, right? So really the only one that falls into there, and it's really, I, I wouldn't even say there's a lot of disparity, but parks and recreation. If we were just to get it slightly over that midline, it'd be exactly where we want it to be. So I, it's a little bit challenging. Exactly. So I think by and large, depending on the thickness of the line you drew, um, yeah, I think we're generally in the right, we're in the right place. Um, all right. Next slide.
And something like mobility, looking at this chart again, right, which is lower. I'm not sure whether that's quality or that's related to the number of opportunities people have, right? We're a suburban type of community and, and currently our roads are not organized around that. So, you know, so that's reflecting that. And safety is just way above in terms of quality, frankly.
And the mobility piece, it's also suggesting that residents are not, um, placing a higher importance on.
Correctly. So, yep.
Okay, next slide. So we had the opportunity, um, to ask some custom questions where we wanted to dig into topic areas a little bit more. So, um, the first custom question we asked was, uh, given all the, the efforts the town has put in over the last couple of years on, um, making Needham a more welcoming community, um, how often, if at all, did you worry about someone in your family, yourself, or another person of your same race, ethnicity, or nationality experiencing unfair treatment because of your race, ethnicity, or color? And so what you'll see in this chart is 66% of all respondents said they did not worry at all about that issue. 19% said they worried about that as it pertained to someone else. 8% said they worried about it as it pertained to someone in their family and 7% said, um, they didn't worry at all. And so we don't have additional data or follow-up questions to those questions, but it's a good, um, it's just a good way for us to understand where this topic is in people's minds. We do have, um, in the full report, demographic information. So you can look and see based on, um, who responded, how they responded, obviously not specific individuals, but based on, um, their demographic information.
Do you have an overview in this presentation or do you have an idea?
I don't have it off the top of my head and I didn't put it in there because we were already 25 slides in. Um, but you, it is in the, uh, full report, in the back of the full report.
Okay. Looking at this, I feel like I can assume.
Sure.
I think the other, the other thing to think about with the survey is it, it's a beginning, right? So a lot of things, it's like, okay, now why, we need to find out why or what, what does that really mean? And so a lot of, a lot of the, you know, some of them are just clear that people feel safe in their neighborhood, but other things, it's like, okay, how, how can we get more information?
And Marcus, I do think that the respondents, though there were far fewer, the respondents who responded to the survey online, had slightly different, uh, percentages. Not, I think generally they were the same, but you might want to also take a look at that piece as well.
But I'm, I'm just going into it, we know who the survey pool is. So I'm just, I guess these results, I don't know what I expected to come from these results, but I, we can all imagine who the takers were and I don't know what a result we expected or not. If the 66% to me, you know, to me, I look at that as good news. Someone else might look at it, but what's because who responded? I don't know. We just have to figure out, I guess we put questions in what, um, how we can better maybe narrow them down to, to, to be able to glean information from it instead of interpreting it maybe differently based on who takes it. I don't know.
Well, and, and I think, you know, even the one about another person is that in the current political climate, people are just attuned to worrying about another person. So the question made them think, oh, I, I do, you know, so I think how you understand all this is just something that kind of begs another layer of question. So right now it's information that we didn't have before. It causes there's certainly some level of concern in some areas and, but not necessarily about what.
I will say, um, as a follow-up to this survey, I will, uh, meet with folks from Polco to find ways to better understand some of the data. So there are additional surveys and polls that we can put out that will get to some more, I think, deeper, um, understanding of some of these responses.
I, I think there's a lot to unpack in this slide. And I kind of wonder what the word worry means. Are we talking like you never thought of it or you're Pollyannaish about it? Is it all as well? Or are we, or they literally saying, I don't know anyone in my family who's.
Yeah. I mean, this is the question verbatim. So again, it's sort of open to people's own interpretations.
Yeah. And Andy, I would say, we can talk about this more, but we can ask if you have specific questions for Polco or, or to, that they could help us frame new questions for, or that they have answers to. We, yeah, anything you want to send us or to Cindy?
How do we work with Polco?
I mean, like, if we decide we want to investigate this further, this or some other subject, like how much polling do we do and what's that relationship like?
So there are two things that Polco provides. They provide a library of polls that, a, a library of surveys, I should say, that are already plug and play, right? So you just take the survey. If, if you want to find out more about people's views on housing, for example, they have a housing, uh, specific survey. We can, it's at our disposal. It's part of what we pay for every year. If we want to create an entirely custom survey on any topic, we also have the ability to do that and can talk to them about how we make, make sure we ask the questions in a way that we get the answers that are most beneficial to our understanding.
Communities, are those communities, any communities? Were they similar communities?
It's a good question. So in the past, Polco has provided a list of the communities. They no longer do that because they say it's proprietary information.
That's fine. But did they tell us if it's a similar community? I mean, it's one thing to compare against Lexington and it's another thing to compare against a border town in Texas.
Like I said, past surveys have a list of the communities and there were 500 of them. There are now 600 of them. So if we look at the past ones, they're probably the same and we can take a look, but they don't, we don't say, only give us the communities that look like us. So we would have to go in and just look and see what communities are actually similar to us. But even then, Heidi, we wouldn't know who's saying what, where. We don't have access to their surveys.
And, and a lot, and we'll get to Cindy, we'll get to this, but a lot of what we use it for is how are we doing compared to us, right? So that, that's clear. We know who we are.
Previous years.
And also, I'll get to this at the end, but I'll say generally now, um, the dial hasn't shifted much, uh, since we started doing this. It's pretty consistent across the board. Okay. A couple more custom questions. Um, the next one, we asked respondents, please indicate whether or not you currently perceive barriers to living in Needham based on each of the following. This is not they personally having a barrier because of one of these, um, categories, but just in general, do you think these categories contribute in, in a way to people, um, finding it hard to live in Needham? And so of all of the respondents, 36% said age. Now again, they can interpret that how they'd like. Age is a barrier to living in Needham. So maybe that's young people can't live here or older people can't live here, um, for example. 25% of respondents believe that race is a barrier. 16% believe national origin, 14% disability, 5% sexual orientation or gender identity, 4% religion and 2% gender. Okay, next question. How strongly do you agree or disagree with the following statements about your neighborhood? These are very positive by and large. Um, and this goes back to some of the, the other, uh, earlier data that I showed. Generally what I take away from this is that there is a strong sense of, uh, neighborliness and community, um, within people's own neighborhoods. So I think that's great. Um, the last one here says, I regularly communicate with my neighbors online. I'm pleased to see it's 35%. I don't think communicating online is the best way to communicate these days.
Open up your door.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm glad to see the other numbers are much higher. And then the final custom question, um, was how familiar are you with the town's efforts to make people of all races feel welcome? I, uh, next slide, Kristen. There we go. Um, I was pleasantly surprised to see that even 44% of respondents, um, were at least aware of the town's efforts. Again, the depth of their awareness, who knows, but, um, on its face, 44% of respondents. So again, sort of, we could dig deeper into that if, if that was something you were interested, uh, in doing. And then finally, I just want to turn.
Know if the self-selected group, because I didn't get a chance to go through the self, if that number is higher, any idea?
I don't remember. So key comparisons, I, I'll be honest, I sort of cherry picked these, um, based on what I thought in general, um, would be what we want to know about how people feel about the town. Um, again, was pleasantly surprised to see that, um, by and large, they, uh, were within the, um, margin of error for those categories where we went down, um, and in many instances, um, exceeded where we were. So, um, just, you know, 1%, I sort of discount that, uh, for Needham as a place to live, um, both positively and negatively. 4% quality of services, again, within the, um, the margin of error. 27% improvement in the overall quality of business and service establishments, um, and 29% in the availability of quality affordable housing. Not sure what to attribute that to, accessory toll, tolling units perhaps? So the availability of quality affordable housing, it is still incredibly low, 17% uh, in 2008, 22% into the 2022, but a significant increase from 2008 to 2020.
Moving in the right direction.
Still a lot of work to do there.
We've moved, we've put a lot of, since 2008 since I've been on, we've put a lot of affordable housing or housing in the stream. Clearly we have a lot of way to go, but maybe people are seeing that reflected. I don't know.
I think it's also true that we have found over the years that what is a current important topic comes out in the, so, you know, in years of floods, water was a problem. And we have been talking about housing, just the fact that people have heard of. Just the fact that people have heard about housing might say, oh, yes, you know. So it does tend to be what's in the news.
And so that is my last slide. So I'm happy to take any additional questions. A lot of information to digest.
Yes, it is.
And much more that is not included.
I think people should be really proud of that data, and also, there's a lot of data we can use to improve.
So it's, it's good to see where we are coming out of the pandemic. I think we wondered, and so it's helpful to have the confirmation that, you know, kind of kept it all together, and to see where some of those new questions are to give us just sort of a starting point for thinking about some of those things.
Madam Chair?
Comments?
Yes. You know, I was actually looking forward to this survey because we see so much online, you hear so much from different groups, and it's nice to see kind of perception match up with reality. And, you know, COVID, as was mentioned, and how our health, you know, stood up to that, high marks, how people still feel Needham's a wonderful place to live, high marks, public safety, high marks, customer service, high marks. So I just think, you know, don't want to lose sight of the fact that overall, the survey, I think is fabulous and a fabulous statement about the town of Needham. So we can look at some of those other, the issues that we didn't do so well on, and just, you know, parse those out a little bit. But don't want to lose fact, I don't want to pat myself on the back too, ourselves on the back too hard as this board, but I just think it's nice to see that we're still, even after COVID and other issues coming around, that we're still kind of right there with high marks. So thanks for doing it, I look forward to the next one.
Cindy, do the people who do this, completed the survey, are, are, do they get a question that says, do you want to be added to the Polco database?
Yes, and so we do have, we saw our numbers jump. I mean, it's still not huge. I think we went from like 75 people to 800 people, but we still, I mean, 800 people, I'll take as people who automatically get our polls or get the option to take our polls.
It's a big, it's a big increase, good.
And do we rarely hit the same people? Or we, we, since we have so many people, do we not go back to the same people? Do we kind of?
So on this survey itself, I wouldn't know, because I don't have the data. In fact, I don't have, I don't know ever who the individuals are. Polco has the individual information. So on this survey, I don't know if we're hitting the same people. On the surveys that we do on a regular basis outside of this, the people who are taking the surveys, they're either brand new, have never taken a survey before, or they are people who have signed up to take surveys. So there, there may be a huge chunk of people who are always answering the surveys, but we're also always making sure that people have the ability to opt in for the very first time.
It's why we do this survey, because it's completely random, so it's statistically valid. Interestingly, I had a conversation with somebody at Polco last week who said, Needham has one of the longest longitudinal, longitudinal studies going because, you know, we've been doing it for so long and we keep at it. So, yeah, they said, they want to find ways that we can mine the data more. So that'll be really interesting.
So if people wanted to take a look at this.
This and the results from the, the online group?
Yep.
They're available on the website?
It's on the website. If you go to our website under Your Government, there's a Publications tab, and this one and the past ones are all up there. And this presentation is also up there.
And does it, does it still break out the folks who got the survey in the mail versus the folks who took it online?
Yeah, so people can see both sets of data. Great.
Do you know a profile of like the typical respondent age or anything like that?
It is in the survey. Again, I didn't include the demographic in for that, but it is in there.
When's the next one?
Two years from now.
Get your questions ready.
Right.
And I'll just share, finally, that we did, sort of, Matt, to your point, we did share this information with department managers in town because I think they hear the same online stuff, and I think it's really valuable for them to see actual hard data.
100% agree, great.
If, if people found this to be fascinating information and they wanted to sign up to be on the survey list, is that a thing that they can do?
Absolutely. So they can, they can go direct to Polco and sign up for Needham, or they can go, I think if you click on this survey, it'll take you to Polco's dashboard, and you can sign up there. Or they can email me, and I can walk me through it. And this will be in the newsletter this week as well, so I'll put a link in there if people want to sign up.
Cool.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good job, Cindy.
Thank you.
Excellent work.
All right. That brings us to our town manager.
Still geeking out on this data, because I, looking at it, and I said, where's fire service? Because we're always very high. In fact, 98% rated Needham is good or excellent, but fire service nationally is high. So we were similar, you know? And so what makes us different is that police services as, as is, kudos to them both. So we want to leave fire out because they do a great job, but.
It's not that competitive with each other, they probably don't.
Not at all. So, Madam Chair, just a couple items. We were talking earlier about the breweries. This is our traditional request to ask the board to accept and refer the zoning. We've attached the version that the select, the planning board has noticed for its public hearing on September 6th, September 7th. And this includes the microbrewery and the brew pub zoning, and ask the board to accept the proposed zoning article for referral to the planning board for review, hearing, and report.
And I just want to make the point for people who have been writing letters about changes that they'd like to see to this, that this is the initial draft, that it will now go through a public hearing process. They should work with the planning board and make sure their comments are understood. And there may be changes to this before it actually comes back and goes to town meeting. Any other comments? Then I'd welcome a motion.
Remove that the board vote to accept the proposed zoning article for referral to the planning board for its review, hearing, and report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, thank you. And what else this evening?
Just a couple items. So the board issued a proclamation relative to Purple Heart. Just letting people know that on August 7th at 7:00 PM, that at Memorial Park, there will be a Purple Heart Day observance. So there'll be more information, I'm sure, in the newsletter and online about that. Wanted to make sure the board knew that there will be in-person early voting. You voted it on your consent tonight. So people can vote in person for the state primary, which is September 6th. So early voting starts Saturday, August 27th through Friday, September 2nd, here in this, in this room, I think. Usually it is in this room. So lots of information available online on that.
And September 6th is the day after Labor Day?
Yes.
In case people are wondering. So it's sort of crunched right in there, and it's coming up very quickly.
It is. And then finally, we talked about zoning coming at the special town meeting. The board will open the warrant for the special town meeting on August 9th, and we have identified October 24th as the day that we would ask you to call for that. We have run that by the clerk and the moderator. People are making their vacation plans now, October 24th. People without schoolchildren sometimes go away.
I was going to say, as somebody who's guilty of doing that, I'm writing it down. Anything else? Is that it, Ms. Fitzpatrick? All right, great. I don't know if there's any committee reports this evening? From the last four weeks? Do you want to comment anything about climate? Were you at climate? I wasn't at climate.
Oh, right, I should be at climate. Yeah, we, I think we're, I'm not quite sure exactly because it's been a while, it's been three weeks.
Maybe only two, but yes.
Yeah, and then I think the budget request coming up, and possible electrical aggregation coming up for town meeting.
Great. And I don't, housing, was there a housing meeting by any chance?
We're meeting on Thursday.
Thursday, so it's coming up, all right. Great. That brings us to the end of our public agenda. But we do have a couple of things under Exceptions 3 and 6. So I would like to move that the board move into executive session, not to return to public session. For Exception 3, collective bargaining, the police and fire units. And for Exception 6, the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, so that we can discuss the strategy related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the body, and the chair so declares, and she does. And to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Madam Chair, the police and fire reference is my error. That's not accurate.
And Madam Chair, not to return to open session prior to adjournment?
Not to return to open session prior to adjournment.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Otherwise, roll call vote, Ms. Freo?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Mr. Borelli?
Aye.
And the chair of votes, aye. We are going to executive session.